We'll call our December 6 meeting to order. Ask everyone to please stand, cast some words if you wake up our invitation.
Oh gracious, Mr. Father Lord, we come today, Lord, as home as we know how. Father, we thank you, Lord, for this gathering of minds and this council, Lord, that we continue, Lord, to move forward. And we concluded 2021 year, Lord, and begin a new year up and coming, Lord, we continue, Lord, to answer, you keep our hands in your hands, Lord, and we move forward in this county. Father God, these are the blessings of your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, everybody, taking time under their day to come. To get here, first, we have approval of agenda items.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to set the agenda written.
Second. Question is second, set agenda. All of your right hand. Shanannamus, thank you. Up next, we have a public hearing. We'll call this public hearing to order. Orders authorizing the inclusion of one or more properties located in Marlboro County into a multi-county business industrial park. They plan for an alternative allocation of revenues derived from the fee in lieu of tax payments made with respect to such properties placed in the park and other related matters. Mr. Moon.
Mr. Chairman, these are public hearings to go with third reading of a couple of actions that you've been moving towards. The first is to include some land in the industrial park into what's called a multi-county industrial park. It doesn't mean they're moving the land to another county. It's a legal arrangement that allows the county to have more control over the revenue, property tax revenue coming from that. So we're asking that you do that. What it will do is put a parcel of property that you're going to deal with here in a minute that's going to have a Bitcoin mining operation on it. Put it in this designation, and then the revenue, the property tax revenue that comes from that is potentially only short term. It may not be a 30-year thing like building a textile plant. It may be a three- to five-year project. And since that money is not something that we would want to use to cut taxes or to, you know, pay the light bill with, it puts it in a special fund, a capital fund, that you as council would vote to control the usage of the money in that fund. And of course, that could be utilized for recreation project or major capital expense that you all considered when brought to you or came up with on your own to use that money for. So it's going to take that money and put it in there. The estimates of how much money that is range from two to three million dollars over a period of five years. And there is, in addition to this, this particular parcel, there's also another project going on someone else's land that's already in a multi-county park. So there's potential for twice that much revenue. But this allows you to put it to the side so that it doesn't become absorbed in the day-to-day operations and use it for something special or extraordinary that can improve the community or be a part of your strategic plan initiatives.
Any comments, questions from council? Is public? I guess we can go ahead to 824. Orders authorizing the sale of property owned and by Marlboro County for the purpose of economic development.
This particular project is proposed to be located on a parcel of land in the Marlboro County Industrial Park behind the old Musashi plant. So if you turn back behind where Musashi used to be, there's a road, and there's a Marlboro Electric Co-op substation there in a fence. So this parcel, this referenced in the Platts in your packet, is directly in front of that. And so what staff is requesting is that that property be given to Marlboro Electric Co-op, who will then lease it to the project we've been talking about. That is a little bit of a change from second reading because the initial plan was to provide it to the other company, the Bitcoin company, for economic development purposes. But staff and legal counsel looking at it felt that we have a relationship with Marlboro Electric now. We know who they are. The other folks, while I'm sure they're a reputable company, would require a lot of vetting and a lot of background checking. Marlboro Electric is a known entity established in the county that the county has a good relationship with. So it's an acre, it's right at an acre, it's not a big piece of land. And quite frankly, if it ended up being part of their substation property without anything on it, that's not a bad decision either because that substation serves the park. So this would be, coming up, would be the third reading to finalize that. Now, the interesting part of this is all of this is moving very fast, and we don't even own it yet. So you all voted months ago to give to the trailer company a little piece of land down the road from this, and in exchange, they're going to give us this parcel we're talking about today, and then you can provide it for this project. So a lot of moving around, but it's for a good reason. They potentially will hire 15 people and invest about $40 million, so.
No tax breaks at all?
They've asked for no property tax incentives, which is interesting.
Any?
So would this negate what we voted on in prior months?
No, it just, it's changed as you go. The third reading is the one that, you know, is set in stone. So it's the same exact thing you've been doing, just Marlboro Electric instead of this other company.
So we would give the property to Marlboro Electric?
That's right.
In turn, we'd be the property to?
Right. So just felt like that was more of a, you know, we're a known bank, a known entity.
Any more questions? All right. All right, we'll close the public hearings. Approval of minutes. First, we have November 9, 2021, regular council meeting.
I'm going to accept it. Ma'am, this is written.
We moved in second. All of your raise your right hand. Thank you. Shenanigans. November 22, 2021, call council meeting. Moved in second. All of your raise your right hand. Thank you. Shenanigans. Old business. Orders 823. Orders authorizing the inclusion of one or more properties located in Marlboro County into a multi-county business and industrial park. A plan for an alternative allocation of the revenues derived from the fee in lieu of tax payments made with respect to such properties placed to the park and other related matters. Third reading. Mr. Moon, anything else to comment on that?
Can we specifically earmark this money for a specific purpose?
No, just, all we're saying is for a capital fund, and then you all accept the rules for that. So you'd have to come out of, take that money out of your system. It would be part of either the normal budget process or a budget amendment, please.
I make a motion that we accept ordinance 823 as written.
All right, second.
Moved in second. All of your raise your right hand. All right. Shenanigans, thank you. Ordinance 824. Authorizing the sale of property owned by Marlboro County for the purpose of economic development. Third reading. Anything else to?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept ordinance 824.
Second.
Moved in second for 824. All of your raise your right hand. Shenanigans, thank you. New business. Ordinance 825. An order adopting a redistricting plan from Marlboro County Council, redefining the eight single-member council district proportion to the population in accordance with the 2020 federal desensitization census and applicable laws and requirements. First reading title only. Mr. Moon.
Mr. Chairman, you know, as we learned last time, once you have maps and you did draw, it takes three readings in a public hearing. So kind of like the question Doc Johnson had, it's a good one. As you start reading, you know, that might change until you get to the last one. But you're allowed to do the first reading by title only, just to get it going. And your deadline to do all this is the first part mark, so you're really under the gun. So this will allow us to have that count, that first of three readings, and then council and all committee work on the maps. And we did have some input from council districts that touch each other, and that'll give us a start. But of course, you know, you eventually have a community meeting, a vote meeting, and all that. But this is just to get the ball rolling, to meet that deadline.
Question through, ordinance 825. Second.
Moved in second. All of your raise your right hand for title only. Shenanigans, thank you. Ordinance 826. Orders authorizing pursuant of Title 12, Chapter 44 of the Code of Laws of South Carolina 1976, as amended execution and delivery with fee in lieu of adverberum tax agreement by and between Marlboro County, South Carolina, and a company known as the county as Project Roads, a sponsor, one or more sponsor affiliates to provide for a fee in lieu of adverberum tax incentives to certain special source revenue credits for the benefit of a project in the county. The enlargement of the boundaries of the Morde County Industrial and Business Park previously created by Marlboro County and Dawning County to include certain property located in Marlboro County, South Carolina, now or to be hereafter owned or operated by Project Roads or one or more companies related thereto. Other matter, other related matters. First reading title only.
This is a summer project. As you know, you know, we, council took some action to make sure you have a good solar restriction in place so that you don't have something flop down in the neighborhood and be run against hours. If you look in your package, you'll see a map that shows this property. And I think I can describe where it is, if assistance can understand. If you leave Huntsville and you go all the way to Wallace, and you stop at Horn Cove, and you take a left like you want to Brickyard, when you pass Delta, and you get into that sharp curve back to the Brickyard, the property on the left is the property where they want to be. On Dixon Road and Brickyard. And so the incentives that they're requesting are in line with the incentives that you provided for the last project in McHaw. And it actually scaled up a little bit. Delta was about almost $3 million, and they requested $4,500 per megawatt. And so what they're basically trying to do is come to a dollar amount per the amount of energy they're creating. And the last one we did was a little bit bigger, and so I think we did, we did, you made them pay $30,000 per megawatt. So this is more of a small. They have submitted a plan to, to ability zoning people to make sure it fits those requirements. The good thing, I guess, is that there's nobody really living around it. It's land surrounded by timberland and fallen. But this is the first reading on that. And I can tell you, if we're looking at it quickly, that it does seem to meet all the requirements, and the incentives requested are in line. Of course, it takes three readings. And the planning commission will have to meet to confirm and meet the requirements.
Mr. Chairman, on first reading, I make a motion to accept ordinance 826. First reading only.
Second.
Moved in second. All of your raise your right hand. Thank you. Up next, Resolution 112102. Resolution authorizing submission of an application by Marlboro County for airport grant for the United States of America, at and through the Federal Aviation Administration, in the amount of $130,000, and authorization to accept grant if awarded.
Mr. Chairman, this is a grant that we get almost annually from the FAA, and what they're planning to use it for this year is to repave the parallel taxiway. So our airport, if you don't know, is really a nice airport. We not only have 5,500-foot runway, but we have a parallel strip of pavement where when you come down land, you can come back without being on the runway. So this is to repave the, this has been, you know, we have an airport commission, y'all point, and they're aware of this, and they're in agreement with the program. So we would ask your approval to proceed with it and get that money from the FAA.
I move, we approve Resolution 112102.
Second.
Moved in second. All of your raise your right hand. Shenanigans, thank you. It's good money to come in for the county. I mean, that's a good thing. Resolution 112103. A resolution to approve the building design for Project One and confirmation of compliance of sound restrictions for Marlboro County Industrial Park.
Mr. Chairman, if you look at your package, you'll see a couple of renderings of what this thing would look like. This is the Bitcoin project, and under the, you have restricted covenants that relate to the land in the industrial park. And of course, that's a good thing. That gives you the ability to control what goes in there and make sure that they're not bad things going in there. Well, in review of those, there are two things that you have to prove. One is the building design, and the other is if there's some sort of pollution or anything like that, you would have to have some control over that. Well, the only thing to be concerned about this is the noise that it makes. These things have fans, a cool computer, 24/7. So when this came about, you know, we did some research and found that, you know, in some areas in the past, they would have these things that would be contaminated. We wanted to make sure that wasn't the case here. So we consulted with our environmental lawyer, Steve Webb, some of y'all know Steve, and from that, his advice, what we learned is we had a sound study done. So we had consultants that went out, and they put microphones basically along the roads around this, and they measured what the sound level was at that. So they looked at the sound level, and then they looked to see what the quietest time is at that site. And from that came up with a number that these folks need to comply with, and that is 45 decibels. So if you approve this, then there would be a legal agreement come up between the county and these folks not to exceed 45 decibels. And we would actually give them GPS coordinates of where those points were. And just to make it simple, they would be on Rogers Lane, which is the dirt road that goes to our factory, you know, that used to come through there. And the others would be on the northern side of this parcel we look at and then go where the farms feel start. So consultant and everybody involved feels that protecting anybody nearby that, you know, had a lot of noise and everything like that. You need that anyways. So what we're asking or recommending is that you approve the building design and finish with that, and that you approve us moving forward with, coming up with that agreement to make sure you have protection for the sound level there.
In the agreement, what would be the punishment, if there is a punishment, a fine or a fee if they run? We know, anything can be perfect all the time. If they continue to go up and we don't do nothing, what would, you know, what would be the fine or fee?
That's a good question, because it's, you know, it's not like it says in there we could take three days out there and lock them all up. I think we'd have to take them to court to get an injunction when they're in six operations. There is no, good question, they're clear and easy to stop. Full plug.
We don't want them to stop because of the money revenue, and that's, but we definitely want to make sure that they don't want to mark either, you know. Just because they're giving the county money, then they go to 50 decibels on the regular, so.
Yeah, you make a good point, and there is that risk there. And I have a good answer other than that. I think that if someone that, that the land over there is not up to, you know, that would go.
Any more questions?
Make a motion.
All right, I have a motion in the second. All of your raise your right hand. All right, thank you. Number E, Resolution 112104. Resolution identifying a project to satisfy the requirements of Title 12, Chapter 44, South Carolina Code, and allow investment expenditures incurred by a company known as the county's Project Roads and its affiliates-related entities to qualify for expenditures eligible for fee in lieu of tax agreements with Marlboro County, South Carolina, to prove for other related economic development incentives included special resource revenue credits and other matters related thereto.
Mr. Chairman, this relates to B, 5B. And, you know, we two of us filed an adhuesment agreement that lets these folks know that you are eligible for these incentives. And we're moving forward, we're trying to provide those to you. So really, this kind of goes in front of B, but it's okay, it's out of order. 5B is where you actually pass, you know, the actual specific numbers. This is just saying, hey, we want you to clear the direction.
I move where you approve. Resolution 112104.
Second.
Moved in second. All of your raise your right hand. Shenanigans, thank you. Approval of 2022 holiday schedule. I think we had a copy in our packet. Any comments or? I think these are state holidays, kind of two.
Yeah, or when I came back and looked at the public service, we had a lot of them right away, every day off. But it's the same.
We have a motion for that.
Second.
We have moved in second. All of your raise your right hand. All right, thank you. Approval of council regular meetings for 2022. I guess a map of that also. Same, second Tuesday. Second Tuesday. I make a motion to accept the meeting, county meeting schedule.
Second.
Moved in second. All of your raise your right hand. Thank you. Approval of boards and commissions. About any appointment of boards and commissions? What up? Reports, Mr. West Park.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, council members, and Mr. Moon. I have a report for you through November 30, 2021, and expenditures through that period total, revenues rather, total $2,433,811. Expenditures through that same period total $4,759,142 of a $12,825,594 budget, or 37.11% of budget year-to-date. We're tracking very close to where we were in previous years, feel confident that our expenditures are on track, and hopefully our revenues, as we get closer to tax collection, will be as well. I don't know if there's any questions. I'd be glad to answer those at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Park? All right, I think everybody's good. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this time we do our administrative report. As we do every month, we recognize employees with five or more years of service. This week, this month, we have three. Mary Hood, 15 years, April. Driggers, at seven years, and Channing Covington with 17 years. We have a couple upcoming events. We have the employee Christmas dinner this Thursday, the ninth, at 5:30. There's only, we have a committee that looked at it, employee committee, and they only are allowing employees and not spouses or partners. So that's a little bit of a change, but it's better than last year where we couldn't even have the thing. So we look forward to that and hope you all can come out. That's usually a good, a good thing. We also have the Economic Development Partnership drop-in coming up on Wednesday, the 15th. You see that on there, and hope you can participate in that. As far as administrative report, with redistricting, we did receive some input this afternoon from different council districts that touch. So, you know, that's not necessarily meaning that we got the solution, but at least starting to look at the impact of some of those swaps that might could occur there, because we do have districts that need to give and some that need to take. We will, staff will now take this to the state to have them draw a first draft, which you can review, and then go back around one more time. I've sent, I've given you, I hope, everyone, and I can give you one if I didn't, a timeline, a suggested timeline on steps to get towards March, where we need to be. Of course, you all are very strong in the, in the desire to have community input and community meetings. So once we have a draft to do that with, then we'll schedule that for you. You're also required to have an official public hearing, just like you had to dispose of property tonight, before you pass the final version. I do believe we can accomplish this by mid-February if we stay at it, and we'll work towards that goal. And I believe that'd be council's goal as well. With regards to recreation, I did have some time slots for tomorrow. They've started doing stakeholder interviews. Of course, you all are the primary stakeholders. I would, if you're available tomorrow or Wednesday to talk to these folks, they do a phone interview to get it going, to make sure they understand where you're coming from and the direction you want to go. They'll then follow up with more of those meetings. They'll come here, have focus groups and small groups, you know, over the next month or so. So hopefully, we can, this will move things along, and we will, we'll end up with a plan that we can, can work towards. Economic development, I have a lot to report on economic development tonight. There's a lot of activity, a whole lot of activity, all of a sudden, it's kind of coming to time to get things done as we close out the year. We have active projects that I believe to be real, whatever that means. You know, a lot of times, economic development folks will make up some corny name for a project or, you know, something that never comes to pass, but I believe we have some that are real. And when you add up the amount of money they're talking about investing here, it's about $125 million. Of course, you heard about one with the Bitcoin tonight, and we have another expansion of an industry here that seems to be going to happen. If you add up all the jobs, it's about 90 new jobs. So I'm hoping that we can be standing here soon, talking about 90 new, you know, 90 jobs. Needless to say, you know, staff and legal counsel, several different legal councils for different things, have been busy trying to put the deals together. You know, you saw us tonight asking you to provide land that we didn't even own yet because we had to do this and that. Well, that's kind of the nature of the business, and a lot of times, folks are, like anyone else, they get near the end of the year and they want to get things done in a hurry. But I appreciate, you know, your commitment to getting it done. I think that's what's going to make a real difference here and, and move at a pace. Y'all, you know, shown indication to move at a pace that meets the timelines of who we're working with. This meeting tonight was moved up for next week in order to get things done. So that's good news. Some more good news is we'll have a groundbreaking for the new spec building here soon. We, we have building inspections crowd that'll look at the building plans and all, but we also have to have someone look at what's called pay apps. So what'll happen is they'll get 10% into the project, and they'll come and say, we want you to pay us this much money. So we're going to have to advertise to find, you know, a firm or something that'll review those. Talking to the state, that's something we have to have. So we'll be advertising that here soon. That's good, because that means we're getting ready to do something. And all that's in the budget, you know, the state provided the funding for this, so that's great. So that's good news. Some more good news is we, we've already received money from the state with regards to the spec building, which is about 1.7, it's typo on there. And we use that to go towards building the spec building that's getting ready to get underway. But now, you know, we've come across, or we've been able to get another 2.3 from the state. So this is money that, it does require a one-to-one match, and it's to be used for the rehabilitation of Delta, which we've been talking about for five years, and also the development of additional industrial land. If you look at the industrial park that we've talked about tonight, we're running out of property there. So we've got to figure out what's the next step. Should that be closer to the interstate? Where should that be? But that does give us some money to do that. We had, we had budgeted to do some of these things anyways, so this coming along means we can do even more. And I learned this afternoon, after we wrote this, that money we've already spent, like at Delta, for example, can go towards a match. So we've spent a good bit of money doing environmental stuff. That's what's held that up. So they'll allow us to count that. So this is really, really good news. It's money that's manna from heaven, and it'll allow us to move at a faster pace to get some things done. So we're excited about that. I hope you are too. Start to see some action, and these, these new jobs and capital investment will result in a lot of hard work and move us forward. I can answer any questions? Try to. Yes, sir.
Redistricting that we're doing, I really would like for staff to develop a revolution for next month, because some people may not know that we don't have to report to the Justice Department any longer. But I would like for us to draw these lines as if we did have to report to the Justice Department, and I would like for us to develop a revolution stating that fact, that that's what we're going to do.
If nobody has any objection, I can work that up for y'all.
So you're saying it's strong that you want the lines drawn as if we was going to report?
That's right.
Is there anything that prevent us from sending our information to the Justice Department just as a precaution, having a reason to make sure that we are directly in the appropriate fashion of drawing these lines?
I don't know if there's a, anything preventing us from doing that. However, it is of the utmost importance that we develop that type of integrity when drawing those lines, you know, that type of mindset, you know, for our citizens to know that we're really, really trying to do the best that we can do.
I mean, I can ask, Dr. Johnson, if they'll do that. I'm not sure if they will or not. I think the challenge would be the timeline. Just my, my take on it, I think if you got to a situation where you're way out of whack with what you had last time, I think that's a good idea. I think what you'd hope is that maybe you can get there. It's going to be a challenge, though, but I can certainly look into that, have an answer to that question. And if everyone's in agreement, I can.
The criteria set by the state chooses each district, it's got to stay in line with the district previous to 10 years ago, roughly.
Well, there is no, there, not anymore, though. It's, they don't. I think that's what he's saying, is they used to, we had to send it to the state, then the General Assembly had to approve it, and then it had to go to.
Wow.
They don't do that. and then it had to go to, they don't do that anymore.
They give us guidelines that says you can't have a totally minority district or totally white district. I think I seen that a lot of that was handed down from the Justice Department to the state, that you've got to fly out of these rules. But yeah, I guess if anything goes awash right now, you're talking about months and months and months. We don't have that.
But just to be clear, there is no requirement. I mean, y'all could vote and create 400% African-American districts and 400% white districts. So I think your point is, y'all are saying sort of the same thing. It's just I want to make sure y'all know the state's not watching over anything anymore. So it is up to y'all. And what you'd hope is about going around and around, you get to somewhere close, and, and I can draft something. I think I understand what you're saying.
I think your resolution is going to say that council's going to take every caution to move forward to do what's right.
That's right.
It's kind of a...
Within the general guidelines.
Yeah, within, is that kind of what I'm getting?
It is. I mean, the, the Justice Department requires certain things to happen or not happen. And once you know that we adopt that, those rules, or those, those standards, then, you know, then we should be okay.
Yeah, I think they've said them, so yeah. I think we could, we can just draft something to get, get in there. Nobody has a problem.
Okay, I'll give you...
Yeah, I'm glad to hear the Delta project, you know. It's, it's like it just goes and goes. And like, hey, we have not done it on that Delta project, so it's good to hear that, you know, we can finally get some things moving. Everybody always asks, when, when, when? And environmental, I mean, anything you ever have to do is, you know, if you ever been environmental, it takes forever to get it done. So I'm, I'm looking forward to today that we can get something going, so.
I'm ashamed of even talking about it.
Yeah.
I guess the good thing is we had a million-dollar CDBG grant to do the demo, and they decided they couldn't do that. But in return, I don't know if it's connected or not, we ended up getting $2.3 million. So, you know, that's probably not a bad trade.
No.
So, and there's no restrictions on that with this money.
Well, every time that, at least when they did order the field building for Senator Scott, very first question they asked me, "How's the Delta project?" So they're watching, you know? And that's some avenue we can turn to when we do need more money. That's a big project of Senator Scott's. And he would love to probably come in Marlboro County and take a big grant to us, to have that project come along.
Yeah, we'd, we'd love to have some of that money, too.
Yeah.
We've had people burning the phone up, wanting to lease the part that's, you know, we've got pretty good. The problem is, they all want to use it for warehouse and no job creation. So, you know, right or wrong, I feel like past council direction was that needs to be something that'll create jobs, so try to hail it off. But we're, we're about to the point, as I wrote in the thing and didn't read, you know, we're already taking proposals for electrical and all. So we would be able to come to y'all and say, "Well, let's lease this for warehouse to so-and-so for a six-month term, so at least you've got something going, you know, as you continue to fix it up." But it's a huge place, and we're ready to get started on it, too.
Anything else? Thank you. Well, next we have, I think, one citizen's, is it Mr. Franklin Smith? Franklin Smith. Smith, just come up and state your name, where you're at, and what, your name, where you're from, and, you know, just remind everybody we have three minutes.
All right. My name is Franklin Smith, in Clough. I'm at 251 Highway 381, Clough, South Carolina. I was here about a month, maybe a month or so ago, concerning the American money that was issued out to the employees. But we was there on the 20th. Another fact, 2019, that money was enacted then, was put into action. And 2021, March 11, I believe, it was given out. But 2020, the world never seen anything like the pandemic that happened. And we was all involved with that. To be honest, I think it would be totally unfair if we didn't get something for being there, risking our lives, taking it home to the families and all that good stuff. But that's the way I feel about it. And I'm gonna keep grinding, because I think we deserved that, and we're looking forward to get it. But in that rate, I said something about recreation. A lot of people spoke for the recreation. Tell you a little story, 40 years ago, recreation didn't exist well. So we had a young man that gardened a hammer, put a group up together, and we put a kind of wide recreation apartment here. And it didn't have much to do then. But after years passed by, a couple of years, we got doctors, lawyers, football players, all coming out of Marlboro County, you know, due to the recreation department, you know? And right now, the recreation department, they have a lot of drummers, a lot of gripes. Kids are tearing up the grass there in Clough. And we, we got a mess going on over there. So we need some activities concerning older people, to that matter. Before, we used to have septyones around here one time. Recreation was the excitement thing, you know? But as the years have slowed down a little bit, but we got some production out of that. But unfortunately, it's not like that now, you know? And people's all over me about it, because I was one of the founders of that recreation over there in Clough. But the 10, the 10 million, yes, I think we deserved that. Who have a young man supposed to get in there tonight? But I was there to feel it. I got laid off, and I was right today. I don't know why I even got laid off. They dropped me like hot cake, you know? I had, I had kind of money, I had kind of a uniform, like a public worker. I turned that, turned it in, and put that in, you know? Anyway, I got laid off for my birthday. How about that? But that's all I have to say for now. But it is what it is.
Thanks, sir. All right. I think that was the only person that was signed. The rest of them are scratched. The rest of them are scratched out. Patricia, was that, okay. All right, thank you. Right, Mr. Wood, start on your end.
The, like Mr. Smith said, I think it was more like 50 years ago, because I played that recreation program. Now, I'm 60, so I won 20 while I played, I was 10. So I think you and Mr. Ken and Sam McCollum, I think y'all did 400 recreation programs 50 years ago, if not more. And that is the, the buzz, the disappointment that I'm getting. I see two of our coaches that have coached in the Clough Rec League over the past years, Aisha, and Ms. Lord, Ms. Smith, I mean. And we are, we still at a crossroads that kids, in the past, a little bit of history, in our, in our past, our coaches, a lot of kids did not sign up until we have trial or gathering. We opened the gym up, so everybody come out, and we sign them up then and there at Clough Gym. There was no internet, the cards were there at the site. From seven-year-old with my Aisha's coach all the way up to the 17-year-old, we were half a hundred kids playing in Clough. And now, I think, the last number we got, we got less than 100, kind of wild. You know, we said it one time before, something needed to change, something needed to remain the same. We, it, it's, it's hurting to see our kind of wide recreation program went from sugar to shame. That's not a good word, shame. But, you know, we, you know, our kids, they're the ones suffering. They're the ones suffering. They're the only ones doing without. We can't keep our kids inside house playing video games. We can't keep our kids in the house where they cannot learn sportsmanship, friendship, camaraderie, fundamentals. You know, we hurt themselves. And if we don't see it this year, we'll see it the next two or three years down the road. Our football team already suffering now from the, the lack of, two years now removed, that no football program. They're going on our second year in the basketball program. If, if they don't take a drafted turn, we have to get our kids back into the loop. We get out, and I know, I know there's some thing that we are in the mix of with the recreation and the image committee and so forth, but we gotta do something here and now. You know, we gotta do, we need to do something here and now, because you cannot explain to our kids why we're not doing nothing. You know, you could tell them, well, we could do something better down the road. But down the road, they'd be, they'd be so far gone, so far lost, they don't want to have the love no more. We gotta, we gotta create that, that energy. And I know this for a fact, because I'm old school. If I got a child eight years old, nine years old, and first year playing, and that coach is somebody I don't know, male or female, my child won't play. Simple as that. You know, but when we do our individuals in Wallace, in Blenheim, in Clough, in Benefield, it's a small circle, but yet, parents know parents. Parents know coaches, you know? Half of the coaches that we had, they played in our rec program. Dr. Johnson was, he played under my leadership when he was 16, 17-years-old, you know? And then he turned back, gave to the program. Will Johnson did, you know? Other coaches that already didn't know what it take, and didn't know how, the impact it did on their, on their lives. And when we see kids walking down the street, black and white, pants sagging, running them up, you know, cursing up and down the street, you know, that's because of the fact they got nothing left to do. One thing that what our coaches did, and one thing that we, if we make sure our coaches did, make sure that every child got opportunity to play. Every child would learn how to be respectful, not only on the court, but off the court. It, it may, it do anybody good when you walk down the street, or in the store, and first thing kids say, "Hey, Coach, how you doing?" Because they don't have, some of them don't have a father figure. Little kids come in and say, "Hey, Coach, how you doing?" You see the, a coach see a, when they're former player doing something wrong, they give them a look, and they get right. You know, appearance and authority goes a long way in a small community. You know, having, you know, Coach Johnson, he would never coach me, but when I see him, I call him Coach, because he got that stigma. Coach Freddie Davis, he got that stigma. You know, we, we coaches is known throughout the county. It is, you know, it helped bridge that gap. Also, I'd like to thank the county, Ms. Patricia and Mr. Mullin for the donation for the Clough Parade. The Clough Parade director is here, and it was a good parade. The weather was great, had good turnout. People really enjoyed it. And we, everybody tried to get in the holiday spirit. So, you know, that was a good, that was a good kickoff. Ms. Renee, we thank you for your hard work. And the band, you know, the band did their thing. And we have, I mean, it was just nice. It was, it was real nice, you know? And until you got good weather, a good music, and people have fun, it's a good day.
Lady Red?
I'm very Lady Red. It's on you.
First of all, I'd like to say that, what you was talking about, the recreation and all, and I'm pretty sure we do need to step that up some for the young people in Marlboro County. And they had a saying I, I used to hear on the TV. I can't think, Lou, what's his name, Lou something or other? But anyway, he would always say, "A mind is a terrible thing to waste."
Lou Ross.
What?
Lou Ross.
Okay, that's right. A mind is a terrible thing to waste. So what you're saying is that we need to step it up with the children and get them involved. And not only children, you got a lot of elderly people need some, some, some kind of activity to go to, too. They need something different than what, what we're doing. But other than that, I want to say, I know some of y'all, I may not see them more till after Christmas. But I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And, and on the top of that, I want you to keep on thanking God for that we're still here in our health and strength, and we hadn't been attacked, and that's a blessing within itself. That's a blessing within itself. So y'all just hold tight and keep praying. See, he's, he's seen us through to this point, and I know he continuing to see us through. Yeah, so I, I believe that. So, but anyway, I think, I don't have anything else to say.
You don't have to pick it up?
Yeah, you got to pick it up? Yeah, that's right. I'll pass plate right.
All right.
Yeah. And in line with recreation and young and older people having the things to do in Marlboro County, I'm hoping that with this image committee, that we really can go ahead and get things rolling to get projects underway and fulfill. We need this, the center that you were, what was the name of it again? You, you introduced it to us last meeting.
But anyway.
Yeah, it's a center where older people can come, and they can do activities there. If we work in conjunction with the East Side Alumni Association, they have a lot of ideas, things for us to do. I have ideas about this recreation project that hopefully we will embark upon. And it's just really, really nice to see that everybody appears to be coming together. The city is coming together. The school board seems to be wanting to do this project along with the county, and everybody working together to get it done. That is more than refreshing for this county. I just wanted to, of course, I want it to move faster, but I know it's a process. But hopefully, God willing, we can get, get things going.
I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Smith for coming in and forcing his concern and opinion about what he feels that he rightfully owed being part of the Public Works Crew or the Recreation Crew when the pandemic hit. I'm not sure what we can do, but I think it deserves a careful look, even if it's not from the recovery fund, that we have this ordinance that specifically states what that money is allocated for and, and the dates and the specified times that the employee was supposed to be working and continuing to employ. But he didn't quit, he was laid off. And so I think it deserves for us to at least look at what we could do. That's not a part of this particular ordinance. But if he was in the pandemic, if he's worked through the pandemic, and I think he actually caught COVID and got sick, and, and one of his coworkers actually died, you know, of COVID who was in that with him. I think, you know, rightfully so. If I'm him, rightfully so, I'm coming to council meeting and speaking my concerns about what I think I deserve in that process. So I respectfully request that we at least look into what we can possibly, you know, do. As far as recreation, I can tell you right now, our recreation situation is in a mess. And, and it's, it's not pointing fingers, it's not thing. But if, if I'm a pilot and I'm off course, then I re-shift and get back on course. We are really off course with our recreation department. And we have time to salvage our basketball season. I met with a, a young man on, on Saturday, and he said, "Coach, why they change basketball? and he said, coach, why they change, um, basketball? Cause my momma said I can't play because she can't be able to get me to this place or that place when I could've just went to Clayo and played. And I told her that day, I'm gonna be your voice. I said, we got a meeting on Monday, and I'm gonna be your voice because there's so many other kids with that same, uh, thought process, and so many parents with the same process. If I got four kids, and my kids are in different age group, and I put them all in a pot, and this coach picked my kid over here, and this coach picked my kid over here, and this coach picked my kid over here, and, and there's no way that I could. But if I'm in Clayo, if I'm in Benefield, and my coaches are from that area, my coaches are from Benefield, and they picked my child, and I can almost bet that I can get to their games. I'm almost betting if I'm late picking that child up, that that coach will either stay or even, even drop that child off home. That's something that we can't have with the system that we have in place right now. It did not work in the summer, and it's not going to work now. You have to make sure that you understand that this process is not about us. It's about these kids that are being affected. And it's about these young men and these young women who are not gonna be able to play recreation basketball this season, not anything on their core, because we chose to make decisions that were not in their best interest. We have an opportunity to get back on course. We have the opportunity to contact these commissioners of each area who will in turn contact their coaches, who will in turn get with those players, who will in turn get with those parents and get them signed up for recreation. We're not out of the water yet, but if we continue to go on this course, we're gonna, we're gonna have another, uh, um, generation of kids lost because we failed to make a decision that was in their best interest. It's really important. It's really, really important. There's some kids, and I said it on our last meeting, there's some kids that are unrecognizable right now because of the two years for lack of really recreational engagement. I had a parent that, that, that came up to me and said, Dr. Johnson, you wouldn't even know him right now. He was ten years old when he played with me, he's twelve now. And, and she said, you wouldn't even recognize him. Attitude, grades, uh, all that has totally reframed and reformed from the, the, not in a good way over the last two years. And a part of it is because they were dependent upon those coaches and those people who didn't care about winning or losing, cared about those kids and giving them something to do and standing in the gap, just like somebody stood in the gap. For me, I was willing to stand in the gap for so many other kids over the fifteen, sixteen years that I've been involved with Marlboro County Rec as an adult. And if we continue to go the course that we're on right now, we're gonna lose a lot of kids. There's no need for us to have a hundred kids playing in Clayo, and we have a hundred kids right now across the county playing in our basketball league. We got to realize that there's something wrong with that, 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 those numbers. And if we don't reverse course because of our egos or whatever the case might be, if we don't reverse course, then we're saying to those kids that we don't care what you think, we don't care about you, it's the ones who can and will. Some of these kids can't do it because their parents are unable or, or for some reason. But for us as coaches, we stood in that gap. We stood till eight o'clock waiting on the parent to come to pick those kids up. Oh, we took them home ourselves. We gave them a snack. We gave them all of that because we cared not about winning or losing. We cared about those kids having something constructive and productive to do. If we don't change course, we're gonna lose these kids, and we're gonna lose, those kids feed right into our basketball program and the high school, our football program and the high school. So they depend upon Marlboro County Rec to be at the top tier level. So when we, those kids come up, then they're ready to be able to advance and go to the next level. We need to change course, and it's not too late. Those commissioners got their phone ready to hear from Marlboro County Rec, they're saying, look, let's get these kids signed up. Here the registration form, let's get these kids signed up. Also with this redistricting process, this is a very important, uh, process for the next ten years. I think there's four elections over that next ten years that this process is gonna oversee. We need to make sure that we're doing our very, very best. We can't be perfect, cause nobody is perfect. But we can do as much as we can to make sure that we are following the guidelines that are set by the justice department to make sure that our lines are drawn correctly and in a manner where the citizen can understand their districts and not be convoluted and, and so confined with not knowing who is their council member, who is their school board member, who is their city council member. We have an opportunity to, to right the ship in Marlboro County. And if we don't take this opportunity, shame on us.
Mr. Smith?
Well, there's not much else I can add on, uh, recreation and the redistrict. But what I would say is, uh, Merry Christmas, and, uh, enjoy your family and your friends, and remember the reason for the season, and be safe.
Mr. Blunt?
I just wanna say the same thing to everybody, you know, just, uh, Merry Christmas to you and, uh, be safe. And, um, you know, look out for your neighbors right on too, because, um, people, they don't stop doing bad things just because of the holidays. So if you put your neighbors, and if you see something wrong, if you don't look right, make a call and check it out. It takes all of us to keep everything right. The laws got their hands full, the sheriff's department, everybody, we just gotta, everybody hit one another.
I'd like to reiterate what Steve was saying, uh, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everybody. Uh, again, look out for your neighbor. Uh, there's hoodlums up and down the street all hours of the night. We had some other week at three thirty in the morning up on our car porch. And, uh, it's just ridiculous that they let people walk around at that middle of the night and do stuff like that. Uh, the, one project came and called everybody's interest in, and it's in Anthony's district, is the Academy Road Project. And they started last week, uh, grading and cleaning off the banks. Uh, they coming back tomorrow and take out some big trees on the other side of the banks and grade it down to where the work on the dam can begin. And supposedly talking with Pastor Bowers, the work on the dam will begin next week and could be completed maybe by the end of the month, depending on weather. But that project is moving forward finally, and it's gonna be, the scope of it is gonna be different. They gonna, uh, make it a lot nicer out around the Fletcher Pond. And we're just waiting, uh, for the, the people to come in and start working on the dam and, and get, get that secured to where they can do some of the other work. But anyway, uh, that's all I got.
Chair, you got something more?
Yes, sir.
One thing that, um, I wanna reiterate, with this, this council, what you see here before you, we all work together. Um, District Eight, is it my district, um, Mr. Oldham, District, um, in his district, he knew his people, cause they worked on the dam in his district. So you, they understand me bringing myself in that they don't know about. He just, they say, let me take care of this, you know, I know the people. And this is what we always do. Everybody on the council in seven, six, two, one, five, four, we don't have a problem intervening in a positive way if we got a, a specialty, or we know somebody. It's all, this world all about who you know. When you know somebody, you can get things done a lot quicker. The team we here have, here with eight people, we work together, we disagree and private. Most of the time, we come to one conclusion. Cause at the end of the day, we're all in here in Marlboro County, and we want Marlboro County to succeed in every aspect, um, that we, we, we're really good together.
That, that's, that's true. I mean, that's been a, the goal for council for quite a few years and to continue to move forward is, like I said, I don't think any of us up here is planning on moving, going anywhere. This is gonna always be our home. So, uh, we're like, so we.
At my order, are, are, are we gonna continue with Marlboro County Rec as it is right now? Or, or are we gonna change and do something? I mean, I know, we've been beating a dead horse about this. I know that people be glad to hear me speak and glad to hear me shut up. But I'm not gonna let this go because there's so many lives that are at stake with, you know, something as, 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 as dear to my heart as Marlboro County Rec, because I understand that Rec changed lives. I'm a product of what the recreational system in Marlboro County can do. And I'm not gonna just let it go just out of speaking. We, we need to know if we're gonna change course, or we're gonna continue to pilot this ship in uncharted territory that's not gonna give us the return for our kids that, that I really and truly think and that they really and truly deserve. Are we gonna continue with what we have going on, or are we gonna say, you know, halt the process, go back to the way it was, allow those commissioners and those coaches to sign those players up, let those kids play in their designated area, and let us move forward with Marlboro County Rec as it was? Cause that was not a problem with it. And I coached, the last I coached All-Star in March twenty twenty, we had twelve kids across the county, across the county that made All-Star. And so are we gonna just let it go, or are we gonna say, let's, let's do something? As a council, I'm not talking as a council. We may not be invested. Everybody may not be invested, that everybody has their own areas of interest. Recreation is a strong area of interest for me. Are we gonna allow it to continue to go? Or are we gonna step up as leaders and say, you know what, we on the front line in that area, and we understand what that area needs? And are we gonna just let it go as is, or are we gonna make a decision of revamping and going back to the way it was?
Well, I know, I know in my area, I didn't have enough to make a team. I mean, so it, it's one of the give or take. I mean, I don't think there's a, a idea situation. We didn't, we didn't, we used to have a lot in my area, but then kids got the fault, we just didn't, even the school ball, they weren't enough players to play, have a team. So, uh, like I said, I, I think, well, what we can do is, uh, is, I think we have, we have a recognition, recreation committee with this, of pointed by, by, by this thing here. But just, just look at, I mean, it's, it's, it's done to try to move it forward. I mean, you know, if it works in word.
Whenever it needs.
If it works in one area and don't work in one area, I think that's what we was to try to do is, is to make it happen, is to make something happen. I mean, cause, you know, with the pandemic, everybody got just not doing anything. And so you didn't have enough teams here, didn't have enough teams here. If one's strong in this area and nobody else, then, uh, it's, it's still a county. I mean, that's, that's.
The other thing with all due is that I've coached and worked at Marlboro County Rec for the last fifteen years. I've never known the Wallace not to have a team.
Well, I'm, well, I'm.
Magical team.
Hold on a minute, don't, hold on a minute, hold on a minute. We're, we're adjourn the meeting.
I mean, you can't adjourn the meeting without a, a motion.
I mean, the turn.
Motion, that, you didn't, you can't.
I'm the chair.
Without a motion.
I, I don't have.
Without a motion.